Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Before we get started, I'd like to welcome some of our Boy Scouts from here in the town of North Providence, so guys, welcome to the North Providence Chamber. Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible vote. With regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meeting of January 8th, 2019, to be accepted and approved by the Town Council, do you have a motion to approve? Motion's been made by Councilman Martone, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, purchase of Coletti Farm property. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and vote regarding the purchase of the Coletti Farm property. Mayor?
Do you have a member of the council that you know passed upon for purchase of a Coletti property for renovation for future farm, uh, youth and law community? Uh, we've done some, uh, ongoing negotiations with the Coletti family, and we were here before you approved the forms back. So, we intend to ask you to allow us to get a little purchase and sales agreement with the Coletti family, uh, in a mutual agreement. Uh, price on this property of one million, one hundred and twelve dollars a pallet. Uh, we have the ability to give the funds, as you know. Uh, we had an environmental study, uh, of one of the property, and, uh, we'd, uh, we expect to request that, uh, you support, uh, continue to support the purchase of this property. Um, and within your motion, should you decide to do that, I'd just like, uh, to speak with the authority to negotiate any credits or deductions pertaining to any issue raised by off-managing and, and their environmental study. So, we're going to hold these some ways back, just in case, uh, the citizens have agreed to that, and we'll protect that. So, at this point, uh, asking for your support, uh, continued support, so that this could become another apostle for, uh, future renovation for the youth of, uh, my house.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, do you have a motion to enter into purchase and sales?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any further questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
So, Mr. Chairman, we, as we, uh, done with the date property, we'll keep you abreast of, uh, any of your future, uh, uh, excavations or sale of properties in the next hours.
Thank you.
Just want to remind that, just when we got into, we know we've raised these things, those are the big part.
Yeah, right there.
Uh, we've met with the engineering engineers, and given a hope of, uh, excavating that property, so they will, we'll be along.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, Earthworks Utilities. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and vote regarding Earthworks Utilities.
So, if you have, uh, an ordinance in front of you that we would like to support, and remember the fact, we will address some of the concerns that we heard from the residents, uh, of, uh, Spicetown. So, what's, what's happening is, and this is the perfect example, there was a water main break, uh, in Spicetown. So, the water department comes in, and they fix the water main, and they just backfill the hole. Uh, and what happens is, we're going back, uh, maybe half a dozen times, to just keep, you know, contacting, uh, that area. So, this will help us, uh, you know, force the water department and whether the grid, uh, to, uh, patch that hole, contact it, patch it, contact it, so that it will work better sometimes, especially this time of the year, it's nine even. So, I agree with what the neighbors are complaining about. It's a mess there, where, I hand the time, we can only do so much to address it, maybe you hit it right on the head, catch both plates and close, so we're doing our best to, um, clean it. So, if you, you know, would, uh, take a look at that, and hopefully you could support it. DBW, uh, came up with that, uh, suggestion, so it'll help us, uh, meeting, uh, those cuts that mean, uh, putting out water, grid, and any other structure.
Okay, you all have that in front of you. Does anybody have any questions on it? Okay. Okay, do you have a motion to refer this to the Ordinance Committee, so we can put this in ordinance form?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, seconded by Councilman Bacala, any further questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. One more. Okay. Item number four, Purchasing Board. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on the purchasing board. Mayor?
So, Mr. Chairman, we know that this committee, uh, of council, made some changes, uh, a couple of years ago. We have some issues, uh, purchasing board meetings, the time of the meeting, who should decide when the meeting, uh, is conducted. Now, in the ordinance, it says six o'clock, so we have some committee members that would choose to meet during the day, later on in the afternoon. This was put in, uh, I think this is a little ahead, you don't understand why this was put in. But in any case, we feel, and I have a purchasing engineer, uh, Mr. Moon, has another suggestion, that that should be up to the purchasing board, as then they can, uh, attend a purchasing board meeting. We're saying, okay, that's to be six o'clock on such and certain dates, sometimes the members can't, you know, make it on that, on that date. So, we would really like to have those members of the purchasing board decide when they're going to be able to, you know, uh, we can have a quarrel, so to say, we've been facing a couple of issues where we can't get along, and in the meantime, what's happening right now, we have too much construction going on in town, and it's becoming a problem. So, and Mike Holt, what's with you, uh, another, uh, situation that we have?
Just stay. Thank you.
Um, if you're, I think that Counselor Welch can, uh, can help me on this, but it says in here pretty much that I have to send the agenda out two weeks before, as opposed to sending the meeting, saying there's a meeting, but sending the agenda, solidifying the agenda two weeks before the meeting, and can't, I don't mind, say a week before has been problematic, when the mayor's approached me on, I don't see a construction or, or change order, and I explained to him that the meeting, the agenda's already out, I can't modify it, and it's crippling in some cases, so, again, uh, the way I read this call is that the agenda's out two weeks before. The meeting, though, is not, but the agenda can go off like the council, the agenda is three, four days before, that would be a lot of work.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is, we're gonna put in the Ordinance Committee, we're gonna have a meeting in the next two weeks, and, uh, because this has to go to the General Assembly again, obviously, so we'll get that all straightened out, because I wanna get this finalized, because I know we've been back and forth with this three, three times. So, let's get this finalized and, uh, up to the General Assembly as soon as possible.
I think you should, opposed to the Ordinance Committee, you want to come there, but basically, you just want to just be, go back to the way it was, it wasn't an issue.
We've been, uh, issued one, and I'm issued, uh, so, we're at, we're deciding for, we have, uh, kind of, this, uh, when we all go to construction, or, and we should, you know, and, uh...
Mayor, we, we, we brought it back to the old way, but we forgot to address the agenda part. So, that's what we gotta do, address the agenda part, and then it's back to the old way.
Okay, do you have a motion to refer this matter to the Ordinance Committee?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Ferramagetti, counsel, seconded by Councilman Juisty, any further questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number five, Tyler and Lombard Street abandonment petition continuance. Received a communication from Attorney John V. McGreen, Attorney for Countryview Holdings LLC, to ask for a continuance of the petition to abandon portions of Lombard and Tyler Streets that was originally continued to this date. Okay, we received a letter, I'll read it to the record. Dear Madam Clerk, I represent Countryview Holdings LLC in connection with its petition to abandon a portion of Lombard Street and Tyler Street scheduled for a hearing before the North Providence Town Council on February 5th, 2019. My client requests this matter be continued to the April 2nd, 2019 meeting, to give Countryview an opportunity to appear before the planning board on this matter prior to appearing before the North Providence Town Council. Sincerely, John V. McGreen. That's it. Thank you. Okay, do you have a motion to continue this to the April meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Ferramagetti, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number six, Class F Liquor License. Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a Class F license for Mary, Mother of Mankind Church for February 23rd, 2019. Aye.
Good evening. For a fine for a class license for a fundraiser, for the, for the youth, it's a spaghetti meatball dinner. We'd like to add, provide a little wine in the, for the adults, and it'll be from five to nine, and we're not expecting, you know, a lot of, that's, uh, going on, you just want to have the...
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
God bless.
Okay. Okay. Item number seven, Vendor License. Town Council to consider approval of a vendor license from Rachel Bamber, DBA band novelty, to sell flowers on Valentine's Day, February 14th, 2019, at 1394 Minto Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, 02904. Is Ms. Bamber here?
I don't know why she's not here, she's always here.
She's always there.
She is always there.
Can you improve the bottle, can you? Can you improve it? You can do it if you want, she's always here. Sometimes we don't, because we pass it, but you want to take care of the media.
Okay, considering the fact that Ms. Bamber shows up at every single holiday, um, and we do not have another meeting before Valentine's Day, I think we should do right by her and approve this license.
So moved.
There could have been an emergency, um, so I'm gonna make a, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Juisty, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight, Victualling License. Town Council to consider approval of a vitualling license for Howie's Restaurant, LLC, DBA Howie's, at 1525 Smith Street, North Providence. Is there anyone here from Howie's? Just please state your name for the record.
Chris Hall.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
We, we are okay.
1525 Smith Street.
Yeah, where's that, where?
That's, uh, show...
Cole's Gym.
Cole's Gym.
Cole's Gym.
You're where the, uh, sandwich shop was.
Yeah, Frankie's.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the vitualling license?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Ferramagetti, seconded by Councilman Juisty, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you and good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, item number nine, Expansion of Liquor License. Outdoor Dining Premises of Camp Nowhere. Received a request from James Ruskowski, owner of Camp Nowhere, for permission for expansion of a liquor license, dining premises at Camp Nowhere, 1838 Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. This item was continued from the August meeting. Just state your name for the record, please.
Peter Patrana, from Camp Nowhere, and I'll say, James Ruskowski, pardon my voice. Justice Spitzer Williams.
Thank you.
Chairman, what we're attempting to do, this was, this meeting was continued from August, they've been over nineteen months now. On the back of the building, they're looking to, uh, have a seasonal expansion from the Saturday to, from, uh, March until October. The capacity's going to be approximately thirty people, they're going to use picnic tables, and will be a service bar, uh, from the outside. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, from four to one a.m., and then Saturday and Sunday to twelve p.m., to one a.m. They will have, uh, music that will be placed into the area with speakers that will be shut off at eleven, uh, p.m. Very new music. Uh, one of the things they're doing, that has actually been done in Boston for several years now, is they're actually having table games, Jenga, Scrabble, so it's that type of atmosphere. There will be no, there's no entertainment, nothing of that sort, uh, and we're looking for approval. I do have permission, I do have an unsigned letter, unfortunately, I could not get it signed by the landlord, but I do have permission from the landlord, uh, and he has no issue with anyone contacting him. He didn't have a scanner, so, and he couldn't get to my office to sign the letter. So, uh, any questions you have?
I, I spoke to him, and he, he was all right. The Sorrento, Sorrento put a, a back door in, so he wasn't worried about them coming around.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Councilman?
Uh, thank you guys for coming, and this really has nothing to do with you, just a question on my part. How much of the property that you are currently taking, that you currently have at Camp Nowhere, how much of the property you're taking from a different piece of land?
How much is in the...
The, it's in the alleyway.
Four feet.
Please?
Four feet.
Okay, so, twelve, twelve foot of the...
From the existing wall we have now, in the front.
Okay, so, okay, let's say, let's assume this is your corporate office, where you have your corporate office, this is Camp Nowhere.
Yes.
Okay. Where does that line go from, from here to Camp Nowhere, or here to your corporate headquarters? Let me tell you why I'm asking you that question. Can you, all right, there's a bunch of lawyers here, can you serve liquor to someone in a different piece of property?
So, I met with zoning and planning, I met with zoning and planning, and if we have, because it's the same building owner, if we have the landlord's permission, which we added to our lease, then we can. That's what expansion of the premises is. It's, it's an outdoor piece that's owned by the same landlord, with his permission, and obviously your permission clearly, but it would have to be his permission first.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
So, the, the property that you guys are expanding onto is not the same lot that Camp Nowhere is on? That's, that's, that's the lot where the strip mall is?
It's, it's split, it's, it's split between the two.
Okay.
Same property.
So, so I can have a, a piece of property connected to where you want to be, and be able to have a server, waitress, waiter, whoever, walk over to a different piece of property and serve liquor where there's no license there?
As, as long as the owner...
Because it sounds, because it sounds like you're indexing your liquor license.
You can for seasonal expansion only, as long as the owner is the same, and it's within the vicinity pursuant to the general laws, you can do it. You, he could never, he would have to get a building permit and close it in if it wasn't for seasonal expansion. But for seasonal expansion, you can do it as long as the property owner is the same, only for seasonal expansion.
Are you, are you gonna be, um, constructing any kind of, uh, fence or something around there?
It's, there's, there's barriers going up, we go in the halls, there's ballots going up, and every four feet, there's gonna be an entryway into the ballots, um, so people could walk around the ballot. For the council's purview, there is, there is going to be, uh, security, making sure that no one leaves that area with it.
Good. How many, how many, wait, man, sorry, I'm sorry. How many people does your place inside hold?
Seventy.
Seventy?
Yes.
And outside?
In this, in this one?
Yeah.
We, we, I don't believe you have a fire department yet, right? And, and this one? We assume it's around thirty, one more than thirty.
That's between the front and the side?
That's the side.
Uh, what about the front?
How many rooms front thirty? Thirty also.
That means you can only allow ten people in your building? No?
No, no, that's not what that is.
No?
The, there's, the, the department gives a, uh, capacity for seasonal expansion. There's the front, the inside, and the side. You can't go over those three capacities at any one time. So, whatever the fire department says is in the front, that's the front, the inside of the building will be seventy, and the side will be thirty, we're assuming.
Okay.
Because they're going, they're gonna have picnic tables there that are gonna take up room, and as you know, Councilman, when you put tables and chairs there, your capacity immediately drops.
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, the capacity inside is...
You guys came before the talk council once or twice before already with this, and sent it to ordinance, and a good team, and whatever in ordinance.
It's not my understanding.
But one of the questions that were brought to us, I don't, I haven't heard of it yet, it's egress, exit egress, for the other businesses in, in the plaza. So, you have anything with that from the fire department as of yet?
The ballots are not gonna change the egress.
I'm not talking about the ballots. But yes, yes, ballots are gonna change the egress, the ballots, yeah, if you, uh, Counselor, if you put up a ballot, there's no more egress.
There is, there's four feet in between each ballot. There's four feet of space.
There's egress walking wise, I'm talking about vehicle wise, there's none anymore.
There was never any parking over there, no.
But, but, but there's an, it's an alley right now that you can get through. It's an alley that you can drive through, but, but, let me explain to you what I mean. Let's say, for instance, I go to, I wanna go to Sorrento's, and I can't find a place to park. I can go around the side of that building, park in the back, because now there's an egress for him in the back. Once you put a ballot up there, they're gonna take all that away. You're gonna go from, the person now has to leave the parking lot, get back on Smith Street, back on Olympic Boulevard, into the back parking lot to fight, so you're not gonna have any more, uh, egress. Just, uh, entrance or egress, now, fire department wise, safety wise, which is a big question for me. I haven't heard anything about that yet.
So, I met with the fire department last week, and I don't know if you guys will have the drawings, the CAD plans?
They have them.
And I showed him, and he was happy with everything. Fire building zoning plan.
And who did you speak with for that?
Uh, Mike, I forget, I forget his last name.
Connavalli?
Yes.
He's not the fire department?
Well, the zone, zone. Mark, Mark Rizzo.
He's building.
Mark Rizzo.
Yeah, that's fine, Mark Rizzo. Sorry, I'm not with this.
Mark Rizzo you spoke to?
Yeah.
Mark, all right.
Mr. President, I mean, one of my, and I understand where you're coming from, Councilman, one of my issues with that argument, though, all along, has been, if the property owner is okay with it, why are we inserting our judgment or opinion on his behalf? I mean, those are also his tenants, and you'd think that you theoretically be concerned.
I'm, uh, just, I'm not trying to insert my judgment on it, I'm just looking for proper egress, in case something happens. I, I wish nothing but good luck for these guys in the business, and I hope they stay thirty or forty years, or hopefully prosper, become millionaires. That's not a question on, that's nothing to do with these guys here. For me, it's a safety issue, number one, and it's gonna be a point in time when you're gonna have to get back in, you're not gonna be able to, or something's gonna happen. So, therefore, just for that reason alone, I, I'm not in favor of what you guys are saying, and that's just my first thought.
No, no, everybody's entitled to their opinion, I, I think, I don't know that, so, out of full disclosure, um, one of, at the, one of the meetings earlier...
Item number ten.
I had went out to meet with, um, Mr. Spitzer Williams, zoning official Ian Mark Rizzo, and at that time, the specific question was asked, will closing this off in any way affect safety personnel from being able to get through? And he said, I don't, he said he didn't have a problem with it, and again, I don't, wouldn't wanna substitute my judgment for the actual fire official.
And, and forgive me, because I'm not in front of this board at all. There's no, it's not an absolute that fire and building have to sign off on any expansion, because in other communities, they have to, and we certainly would be willing to have you pass this on, or do whatever, based on a recommendation from them that it was okay, because when you go to walk with our progress, firing and in the zoning of buildings must either send a letter or indicate to the chairman that, that they're okay with this. I, we don't have a problem, and I, I thought that you would have known that already, but frankly, I, I didn't realize that that wasn't done, but we, I certainly don't have a problem with that.
Counsel.
Yeah, and this is probably a question for the, the two business owners. That alleyway, is that alleyway used for cars to drive back and forth?
No, no, it's dangerous.
Totally used.
No, it's, it's dangerous. The, the pages would be out there, people from the neighborhood, were originally driving through there at like forty miles an hour, first took it over, and it's meant to be parked, so we obviously blocked that off, during hours of operations.
Right now, you guys park there?
We park there, because our side doors, where our egress is, is right there, so if you park and drive in and out, you open the doors, watch safety, without, oh, that's enough for a way for vehicles.
All right, um, I had another question, and this may be for the clerk. They had the out, they've had the outside patio in the front for a little while now. Have you received any complaints with regard to noise?
No, no, that might what it says.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, Mr. President.
Um, should've asked this right off the bat, what is the seasonal expansion, from what day, projected to what day?
It's from March 1st to October 31st, if any have a description.
Thank you.
March 1st, I thought he's, I said, I thought he's on March 1st.
I'll, I'll sleep wire.
Councilman?
March 1st.
I, I, Councilman? I have a question for, uh, Mark, so listen, uh, Mark, uh, you just told us about if somebody owned the same piece of property, that you can actually serve liquor from one place to another, whatever problem, you agree with that?
Yeah, I don't disagree with the Counselor. Uh, the issue, the, originally, the issue was, with this particular license holder was, I remember at one point, I thought that there was a possibility of take, uh, serving out of another unit, and that, we'll call it the Bellis Pharmacy Strip Plaza. Right. And I had done some research with regards to that, as well as spoke to other solicitors in other cities and towns about that, and as long as zoning and planning and building didn't have a problem with it, uh, it, it wasn't, it wasn't an issue. It wasn't necessary for them to get the other license for that other, a smaller unit within the Bellis. So, this, so what Mr. Patrana's saying kinda goes along those same lines.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve pending all necessary requirements, including zoning and fire?
Can I, can I just add something to that motion?
Sure.
Uh, and, and in addition, that, uh, a condition be that the music be turned off at eleven? I, I know they said they were gonna do that anyway, but I'd like to make that part of...
Okay, adding that, okay, uh...
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Martone, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ferramagetti, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Nay.
Thank you, just note for the record, one nay. Okay, ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, item number ten. Town easement on Wendell Street. Received a request from Anthony Jacoby to appear before the council concerning problems the residents are experiencing due to the town easement in this area. Sorry.
I'm Michelle Arena, I'm on Wendell Street, that's my uncle that's in there.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Michelle Arena.
Okay.
Um, I know my councilman is at the house, too, and I'd like to walk to, huh, the easement has collapsed on itself, can't send the video, but if you have photos that I sent, basically, every time it rains, the easement overflows into our yard. It wasn't too bad up until they paved the road. I know that sounds silly, because two years ago, they paved the road, and somehow now the water is backing up into all of our yards. I have a twelve-year-old son, although, if you have children, he cannot play in my yard, because if you step in my yard, you step in my nose, he will go through your paths, I have a video on my phone, I can show you to Sagal, when my yard, it literally is a river. If you put a can on it, it will flow all the way down the street, and I'm like, my yard is that way, so we just need this fixed. This is my fourth sun pump this week that's going. I spent over forty thousand dollars to water. And it's to the point now where I couldn't even sell my house if I wanted to. Susan, I wanna buy a house, and I support sun pumps, and every time it rains, we flood, and we can't put any water in. I keep sinking, I can't mow my lawn, I have bugs everywhere, and my neighbors are all sinking. I just need this fixed, because I can't do this anymore. I called the town, they combined, they're high water table, and I have a problem. I call when the easement's overflowing, asking, could you please bring me some sandbags so I can stop the water from going into my yard? We don't do that for the roads, so now I spent another hundred and change. And I come to find out, my next-door neighbor from the street called the town, and they bring the glass. If you look at the photos, that's my driveway. The town has been actually nice to sand my driveway, because I'm spending thousands of dollars on salt, and I can't keep up with the ice. It's a health risk. If anything happens to me and my family, fire rescue can knock it into my yard. Mr. Martin told me, he has left it into my house in a storm. I would not let him walk my driveway. I can't get in, my mother-in-law's here today, she literally has to pull up all the way to the one dry spot in our yard, so she can get out to get to the house. She has to walk around to get into our house. If not, you literally escape all the way to our house, to go with egresses. So I just want to...
I think everyone needs to see the video that, one second, one second. We can't show it now, but what I'm gonna have you do is email the clerk the video tomorrow.
I tried sending it to Mario, I tried sending it to you.
Okay.
It's just, that's why I'm saying, I'll give it to you, and you can do it. I'll take it out.
Can you put it on a USB drive?
If I'm like, fine, I'll do that.
Okay.
That's how you usually do it.
I can seriously, I would really like to all see it.
Click it up and scan it out?
So I'll take five minutes, and you guys can take it.
How big a file is this?
Alright, we'll figure that out. But that being said, I know, you know, counselor, did you wanna?
Yeah, Mr. President, I went out and I met with Mrs. Rena, and I can verify everything that she said. When I went out there, it's, the water is coming off of kind of the property next to hers, and it's running down the street. And the problem is that it appears there may be, and again, I'm not an expert, so I don't know what the answer is, and I told Mrs. Rena this, but I would love to find an answer. But it appears that there's more water coming off than the street can handle. And so the street, when they repaved it, now it's impervious, so there's nothing getting through. And so it's all flowing to one drain, which can't handle the amount of flow that's coming down. So instead, what's happening, particularly in the cold, cold weather, which is when I was by there, it's icing up. So there was ice that was literally probably four or five inches thick, both on the street and in her driveway. What I would request, and I'll defer to our solicitor as far as what the exact appropriate motion would be here, but I would like to set up a meeting, potentially with Mr. President, Councilman Di Lorenzo, and myself, and TPW, either at the site or somewhere, to discuss this matter. See, again, because I'm not an expert, I don't know what the answer is, but I would love to meet with someone that can give us some, some kind of guidance as to what we can do. Clearly, there is a pipe that's broken on that easement that needs to be fixed. I think that's the first step, but I would request that we contact TPW, set up a meeting, and see if we can come to some sort of resolution on this matter.
My son lives on seven Wendell.
I'm sorry?
My son lives on seven Wendell.
So you don't?
Yeah.
Okay, a motion's been made by Counselman Matone, is there a second? Seconded by Counselman Di Lorenzo, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We'll try and set up that meeting this week, and we'll come out there.
Does somebody wanna just look at this besides you?
Does any?
Does anybody want to see it? You're something concept, so you know exactly what it is.
I'll let them know. I will, I will. Thank you. Okay, add Number Eleven, speeding on Cottage Avenue. Received a request from Ken Pansiera to address council concerning speeding on Cottage Avenue.
I wanna thank President Odiello, we have a good idea, pretty fast, so thank you for that.
Anytime, anytime.
And thank you for helping me to allow the asphalt burn around my property on the corner of Cottage, on Highland Avenue. That's prevented a lot of runoff from the water, and it hasn't prevented anybody coming across my lawn at the corner of that. That's a similar issue we're gonna talk about tonight. I'm gonna ask for suggestions about how to stop speeding on Cottage Avenue. It's a cut through between Mineral Spring and Smith Street. And the speed limit on that road is twenty miles an hour. There's only one sign that's further down towards Fruit Avenue. I know the school being built, I'm not sure what the plans are as far as pertaining to speeding there, but maybe signage, maybe a police officer sitting at the bottom of Highland Avenue, Washington, because literally every evening, five, six cars are going forty miles an hour, so.
We had spoke, when Counselman Bacala took over the seat, you know, I had, because I believe there's a, the McBurney residence is probably across the street.
What is it?
The McBurney residence?
Yes.
So they called me, and I was explaining that to him, that is a cut through. And he said, what can we do about it? And I said, every year, we put a speed bump up, that...
Speed hump, right?
Speed hump. Yeah, and that deters, you know, as best we can.
Did we put one this year?
We did, yeah.
It's hard for a criminal one day, because...
No, did that help at all, or no?
It did. It's further down past my house, but it does, there's a stop sign there as well in the corner, I can't get in the other street.
From someone who lives behind Wentz Scott Lane, who's got two speed humps, and if anybody's driven by it, they're pretty white, so.
This is just a plastic one.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so I know, you know.
So west speed, a lot of west speed, right, the stop sign on Cottage going that way. Maybe another stop sign near Rice Street, maybe another speed, speed limit sign, and the yellow sign that says children present. People who walk above there, maybe it's busy, I guess.
I drove by the other day just to look at everything, so I don't know if we can make a motion and send it to the police department, as far as just, you know, see if they can put some more presence there, or if not, go to, you know...
Add to his motion, see if they can get on the D-list.
Okay, so a motion's been made by Counselman Bacala, and then add it for signage, and then we're gonna add them to the, your street to the D-list, run by our police department. They do random runs throughout the town.
They said the bottom of Highland Avenue, just right there, they're hidden enough so if somebody comes by this way, doing forty-five, fifty miles an hour, it's a bit of revenue gap.
And that's in the form of a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by...
One more question.
Go ahead.
Do properties have speed cams, do properties have any speed cams that they're installing? Be nice. I would go to right by my corner.
Not yet. And I haven't heard anything that's not a, you know, misleading comment.
You really wanna revenue stream, don't you?
No, 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 I just wanna stop the people down. And I would stop if somebody like, hook up, cutting across their lawn in the corner of Highland Avenue, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so a motion's been made to ask the police about the signage, and adding, to add, D-runs to that, and it's been seconded by Counselman Giusti. Any questions? All, counselor?
Is that considered a school zone, where that is?
That's a good point. Now, it's further down to the block, but it's literally, you know, five seconds to the school.
It could be. I don't know the answer to that.
If it is a school zone, when you get to the school zone, you have the apartment building and the school, and right now, it's very narrow at that point, and you've got cars parking right there, so I mean, if somebody's speeding, I mean, at that point, they're really taking their, you know, life and hands doing that.
Cottage is wide enough, heading towards Fruit Hill, but central, is that narrow street?
Yeah, that's the...
And I've watched the cars zip right by, it's amazing, nobody's seen it yet.
Once, once I think the schools are built and they're in use, I think you'll see a lot of, a lot of traffic changes over there.
Sure.
I think you'll see a lot of...
Is that gonna be done this year?
Different rules and regulations in that area.
Yeah, they'll be open right after September.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna be open next year, so.
Labor Day. Okay, any other questions?
The only reason why I ask is, are speeding fines increased in the school zone?
I don't know.
Yeah, but we just, we just went through that, Counselman Giusti and I just went through that with the round Birchwood. We've gotta, I've gotta look at the map and see certain footage. We can just put signs up, period, and you're right, counselor. I gotta look at the streets and see, like we did with Birchwood, and then we can just have the signs put up.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, be in touch. Okay, add Number Twelve, Navex contract. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote on the Navex contract. This contract is for the whistleblower hotline that is attached to the financial audit committee, which is most, which really doesn't meet anymore, because most of the stuff is filtered through the finance committee. So I'm entertaining a motion to send this to the ordinance committee, and see how this pertains to the financial committee, financial audit committee, and we're gonna have to call the auditor general and see if this is still necessary.
Do we still, do we still pay the state, the state group?
Yes, we do. Okay, that's in the form of a motion.
Some more.
Motion's been made by Counselman Giusti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselman Bacala, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Yep. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Add Number Thirteen, town council meetings for 2019. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote with regard to the dates of the remaining regularly scheduled monthly town council meetings for calendar year 2019, and a possible amendment change to those dates. Since I became council president, I've put this on the agenda every year. This is to cancel the July meeting. It happens to fall either the night before or the night after, the Fourth of July, and there's never anything on the agenda. So I'd like to entertain a motion to cancel that meeting.
Some more.
Motion's been made by Counselman Fiammigani, seconded by Counselman Bacala, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Add Number Fourteen, Camp Mian fitness equipment. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote on the outside fitness equipment at Camp Mian. I put this on the agenda because a constituent reached out to me. They know that I enjoy working out, I'm active in fitness, and they had made a suggestion about putting some outdoor pull-up bars and things like that at Camp Mian, and I thought it was a pretty interesting idea, so just float that out there, send that, send a letter to our administration to see if they could look into that, kind of near the basketball courts, for people that like to work out outside in the summer, so. Any questions on that? Okay, is there a motion?
Some more.
Motion's been made by Counselman Matone, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselman Di Lorenzo. Any further questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Add Number Fifteen, comprehensive plan and zoning code. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote with regard to the comprehensive plan and zoning code to promote further business within the town. I put this item on the agenda, because after my speech at the inauguration, I said I want to do whatever was possible to further business in the town. And as you all know, you know, we have construction up and down Mineral Spring Avenue, and that's something that this council and the administration should be very, very proud of. However, there's been a couple of incidents over the last year where businesses have tried to come to Douglas Avenue, and because of how it's zoned, those businesses had to go through a longer process. I think Mineral Spring Avenue is great, business is booming, I think the next area is Douglas Avenue. I think we're gonna have a Douglas Avenue business carer. However, Douglas Avenue and our comprehensive plan is still zoned industrial manufacturing. And as you know, as times are changing, we don't have any much manufacturing coming to the town. So every time a business has to open, they have to go before the planning board, then the zoning board, and we have to do a spot zoning change. So what I'd like to do is take a look at these major areas, so commercial businesses would have an easier time moving into those zones. So what I'd like to do is send this to the ordinance committee to take a look at changing these zones, and have our town planner, Dave Westcott, come in. You have a motion?
Some more.
Motion's been made by Counselman Fiammigani, is there a second? Seconded by Counselman Di Lorenzo, is there any questions on that? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Just so, just to, so people understand, when the Capriano Group came in to put the storage facility outside of Shaw's Plaza, we had to rezone that whole area. Detroit Autobody, we had to rezone that whole area. Now a barber shop and gym wanted to open, three months before it was able to open, we had to rezone that area. And there's a few other business owners that reached out to me that own properties on Douglas Ave to see, you know, if we could just do a general zone change, so, just to clarify any confusion.
By the way, have you seen the side of Shaw's? I can do what they're doing there.
Yes, exactly. It does, it does. So I think this will make it easier for them. Add Number Seventeen, Alexander Street. Counselman Fiammigani requests discussion and possible...
Sixteen.
The bottom of my agenda is cut off. Add Number Sixteen, scoreboard at Notty Park. Counselman Amerigi requests discussion and possible vote concerning the scoreboard at Notty Park. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the last couple of months, I've received a handful of phone calls with regards to the condition of the scoreboard at Notty Park. So I went by to take a look at it, and it really has fallen into disrepair. As you know, the softball program in town is one of the crown jewels of our athletic program, and I really think they deserve, at least for the scoreboard, to be fixed, if not replaced. So to streamline this matter, I wanna make a motion tonight to...
Before you go there?
Go ahead.
That's already been passed, to put a new scoreboard there. It's on the capital improvement program. And the reason it isn't put up already is because we were waiting for a report from the mayor. He wanted to put everything together in Notty Park as to what he was gonna improve in there. I don't know if you, you can double-check me on that, but I'm pretty sure we've already...
Well, none of us were made aware of that, so why don't you finish your motion?
Yes, and maybe we can address it in the meantime, but what I was gonna do is make a motion to refer it to the finance committee and invite a representative from Parks and Rec to come to give their opinions as to the best options for the scoreboard, as well as the possible costs.
Okay, a motion's been made by Counselman Amerigi, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselman Fiammigani, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Add Number Seventeen, Alexander Street. Counselman Fiammigani requests discussion and possible vote with regard to the improvement of the path connecting the two sides of Alexander Street. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a resident in the Wayland School area reach out to me, and he's lived in there for, I believe he said, thirty years, and there is a path, for those of you who are not familiar, Alexander Street ends at a certain point, reconnects on the other side as far as pavement goes. This resident reached out to me and said, for, you know, as long as he could remember, that path has been used by children who need to access Wayland School, and he brought up a good point, that it is a safety issue. This resident reached out to me and said, for, you know, as long as he could remember, that path has been used by children who need to access Wayland School, and he brought up a good point, that it is a safety issue. Rather than have the children walk around near Mineral Spring Avenue, they could connect to the neighborhoods via that path. I went into the path and, uh, at the expense of my shoes, I was able to get some pictures taken in there. The path, right now during the winter season is, there are branches and everything, but you could easily imagine that it would get overgrown come spring, summer, and, um, create an obstacle for the use of that path. Also, you might be able to see in the pictures, there's graffiti back there, as well as a, a pipe that brings water, I believe from Evergreen Parkway, bring the water across Mineral Spring, and it is emptying in the Wayland School area in the back there. So keeping in mind, and, hm, as it would have it, when I went in, I saw two young children back there. The first thing that they said to me was, "Are you here to clean up the graffiti?" And I had no idea that there was graffiti back there, but I was able to see it, and I made a promise to them that's one of the things I would bring up. So, um, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to the DPW to, um, improve, cut back the vegetation, um, remove the graffiti, and to put a railing where those pipes are and the, the water outflow is to prevent any children from falling.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amerigi, any questions?
Uh, Mr. President, just a comment. I would like to also state that we spoke to another local resident earlier tonight, and she said that when it's overgrown, a lot of times teenagers hang out there and do stuff that they probably shouldn't be doing, uh, so I think improving this area is also, you know, a public safety issue.
I agree.
Okay, okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 18, No Parking on Arrow Street. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on placing a no parking sign on Arrow Street. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Arrow Street, particularly where it intersects with Palm Street, there was a concern by one of the residents in that area, Mike Talarico, who indicated that, and again, this is another one of the narrow streets that we have to deal with, but there is a school bus route that goes through Arrow Street, and, um, there will be, there, there is congestion at the end of the street, which prevents the school bus from going through or safely making the turn. So I think in order to remedy this situation, if we could send a letter to the DPW erecting a sign at the, um, end of Arrow Street indicating that there is no parking 25 feet from the corner.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amerigi, any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 19, Ordinance Introduction. Discussion and possible vote to introduce an ordinance amending sections 605, 606, and 608 of the zoning ordinance code of the Town of North Providence. I'd like to introduce a motion, have a motion to introduce an ordinance for public hearing on March 5th, and for the clerk to advertise the ordinance and ask for a planning board recommendation.
So moved. Is this in regards to the, uh...
Motion's been made by Councilman Motone, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Councilman Juisty.
Is this, is this in regards to Manzo signs?
No, this is in regards to the sign that the new, that the new police fire complex has gotta be moved. They need to, they need to, they need to remove it. The sign's coming off of the new police fire complex, the mayor said it's gotta go.
Oh, you mean those, you mean the buildings?
Yeah, the buildings, Lamar.
They gotta move the location, but also on a very, a smaller scale, but it's not gonna be that, but it's gonna come off in order to finish the construction.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 20, Board Appointments. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote With Regard To Letters Of Interest To Serve On Boards And Appointments To Be Made To The Following Boards.
Okay, do you want the letters first?
Yeah.
There's one.
Okay, A, Environmental Commission. What am I doing? Oh, no, actually, I'm gonna read these letters into the record first. Dear Mrs. DeAngelis, I am writing in response to posting, to the posting on the town's website regarding open board positions. Attached is my professional resume for your review. My family has been residing in the town since the early 1940s. My uncle and father have held various positions with the town and founded numerous organizations in the town. I would welcome the opportunity to further discuss how my background and experiences can be an asset to the town. Please call if you have any questions or need additional information. Regards Charles M. Lynch. You all have his resume?
Where's the second?
Okay, Councilman, thank you for taking time to speak with me about my interest in the zoning board. Below you'll find a brief description of my educational and work history. Nicholas J. Naducci III, 53 Volturno Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. You all have that in front of you?
In this.
Council President Odiello, I am writing to respectfully request an appointment to the zone, to the North Providence Zoning Board. As a former councilman, I feel my overall experience and understanding of our town would make me a qualified candidate for such an appointment. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at his phone number. Sincerely Raymond DiStefanis, 20 Sorrel Road.
Okay, now let's, and then we start with this one, it's for the environmental commission appointment.
Okay, A, Environmental Commission. Hello, attached you will find a letter of interest from Colin Miller to serve on the NPEC. There are several other vacancies on this committee as well. Also discussed last night, a councilman should be appointed as a representative to replace former councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Contact information, thanks. Joseph Fricatelli. Okay, do I have a motion to appoint Colin Miller to the Environmental Commission?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti.
Also appoint Ruth Bucci, right? Um, I, I don't have anything to, I thought you were gonna... Yeah, it's in place in Nicole Quetta, hers.
Okay, we'll also be appointing Ruth Bucci to, uh, to replace Nicole Quetta, who resigned last month. Do I have a motion to appoint Ruth Bucci?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Motone, any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, B, Reappointment To The North Providence Juvenile Haring Board. Do I have a motion to reappoint Gisele Polanco?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. C, Two Reappointments For Alternates To The North Providence Land Trust. Do I have a motion to reappoint Daniel T. Connor and Stephen Barrowick?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Is that it?
Is my agenda on there?
Is that what you mean?
That's it.
That's it. Did she, did you, did she, did he file it? Yeah, did you, yeah, well, did you get all these letters? 45, I think. Yeah, that is key. Okay.
Okay. Item number 21, Joint Poll Location. Discussion And Possible Vote With Regard To Petitions From Verizon, New England and Narragansett Electric Company For New Joint Poll Locations On Jocelyn Street. Does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the new poll locations?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amerigi, any further questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 22, Claims Submitted. Town Council Discussion And Possible Vote With Regard To The Claim Received From The Following. Vincent Catoia, 12 Bellmore Road, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do I have a motion to refer this to the Claims Committee?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 23, Claims Committee Report. Town Council Discussion And Possible Vote With Regard To The Claims Committee Report And Approval, Denial, Or Referral Of Claims Within Said Report To Be Presented By Councilman Juisty. Councilman?
Yep, we had three claims that we took care of tonight. One was for Kimberly Rail. It was for lawn and sprinkler damage due to plowing. She was awarded $800. We were given, we were given another claim by a Mr. Catoia, whose, the claim is for $70,000. We moved that to the insurance company, and then we got another claim for Kevin Lash, who fell and broke his ankle in a pothole, and he's requesting $100,000, and we moved to send that to the insurance company.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Claims Committee Report?
So moved.